So continuing that theme, items six through 11 are being introduced together, yet individually. So they're all themed, and do you want this one Director Harris, or do you want?
Sure.
Tag.
Here we go. I need to read each of these out loud, and then we can address them in the bundle, and to the extent that there are issues that we need to know about, if you could call those out by number. So give me three or four minutes to read as fast as I can. Number six, approval of contracts for specially designed instruction, tutoring services, and other compensatory education services. RFQ 02758, this came before A&amp;F, June 11th, for?
Approval.
Approval of this item would approve annual contracts generated from vendors approved through RFQ 02758. Specially designed instruction individual education program, IEP tutoring services, and other compensatory education services for not to exceed total amount of $1,368,678 for the 2018-19 school year. Number seven, approval of contracts for therapeutic day treatment service providers. RFQ 07695 came before A&amp;F, June 11th, for?
Consideration.
Approval of this item would approve annual contracts generated from agencies providers approved through RFQ 07695. Therapeutic treatment day services were not to exceed total amount of $1,891,703 for the 2018-19 school year, based on yearly 2017-18 contract totals. Number eight, contract approval for early support for infants and toddlers, birth to three intervention service providers, came before A&amp;F, June 11th, for?
Approval.
Approval of this item would authorize the superintendent to execute contracts totaling $4,707,692 with the Experimental Education Unit, EEU, Wonderland Development Center, Northwest Center, and Boyer Children's Clinic, to ensure the provision of early intervention services in accordance with Part C of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, IDEA. Number nine, private schools proportional share services, RFQ 04676, providers, Reither, Catapult Learning, Hamlin Robinson, Spring Academy, came before A&amp;F, June 11th, for?
Approval.
Approval of this item would approve contracts for services for parentally placed private school students under the IDEA, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, for total amount of $794,772. Number 10, approval of contracts for sign language interpreter vendors, RFQ 11641, came before A&amp;F, June 11th, for?
Approval.
Approval of this item would authorize the superintendent to execute contracts with agency providers approved through RFQ 11641. Sign language interpreter vendors for not to exceed total amount of $500,000 for the 2018-19 school year, based on the yearly 2017-18 sign language interpreter contract totals. Number 11, and last, University of Washington Experimental Education Unit, EEU, inter-agency agreement to provide educational services to special education students ages three through six, came before A&amp;F, June 11th, for?
Consideration.
Approval of this item would provide special education services for up to 48 preschoolers and 15 kindergartners, as well as technical support for four schools for inclusion practices for students with special needs during the 2018-19 school year. These inter-agency agreements total $1,329,180. The floor is yours.
Hi. Beth Mills, Director of Special Education. So number six, specially designed instruction. Number seven, therapeutic day treatment. Number 10, sign language interpreters. Each of these contracts are for IEP services that are highly specialized, that we don't either have, don't have the service providers available, or they're specialized placements. For most of the students in each of these, number six through 11, these are contracts that are continuation of services for students. The birth to three funding, which is number eight, this is based on state apportionment. The proportionate share, number nine, the private schools, that's calculated per resident private school student eligible for special education. And the UW Experimental Education Unit, number 11, that amount is calculated based on comparable Seattle Public Schools staffing amounts.
Questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Director Geary, please.
Several questions, since they are a bundle. First of all, and given that your tenure here isn't long enough to know perhaps some of the answers, I'm hoping, I'm hoping that we can have a discussion. So the first question I have is about the therapeutic day treatment service providers. Several years ago, this particular item generated a lot of concern from the public, especially with regard to our contracting with Northwest Soil. And that, out of that, there was some discussion about Seattle Public Schools actually starting its own therapeutic day program, and I believe that something was started out at Old Van Iselt. Now, we, part of the reasoning in developing that program was that we would start to see an elimination of these expenses and our need to contract out of district. And so I would be very curious to know what became of that therapeutic day program if we decided that it wasn't worth it and we eliminated it, which would be the elimination of a program, which I don't know as any of us are aware, and maybe, as Director Harris would say, did I miss the memo?
And yes, I did.
Yeah, okay. And, and if we still have that program going, have we seen a reduction in our contracting costs as a result of it? Or are we now just paying for the program and continuing to contract with these other providers? So that's my sort of questions around the therapeutic day treatment service providers, just based upon our history with that annual item. The next question I have is around 10, the sign language interpreter vendors. This has come up several times out of our deaf and hard of hearing community in that it has turned out that we have not been able either, it's not that we couldn't afford to find people, but we, or couldn't pay for them, but we ended up not being able to find people for certain events, maybe? And so the question becomes, is it better to just hire additional people versus having allocated for contracts that we end up not being able to fulfill because there aren't interpreters available for us to hire? So it's sort of a false place setter, in terms of it looks like we're doing our obligation to make sure that there are funds available, but we haven't really created a situation where we're going to make interpretation available based upon our understanding of the market. So that would be a question I have around that item. And those are my, those are my two major questions. And then, again, I would love to sit down with you at some point and just get an overview of special education, because I'm really feeling out of touch with that particular aspect of our district. And perhaps we can schedule some two-by-twos if other directors are feeling similarly.
Or three-by-threes.
Yeah, unaligned. But thank you. I mean, I'm not, this is a lot for you, but why Jesse isn't standing there, and he's the one who's, he's the one who's brought these issues before us in the past. So thank you for being here.
So can you take your best shot on those questions? And to the extent that you don't have the facts at hand, give us a suggestion as to how we can get those facts prior to these coming before the board again for action items?
Okay.
And then we'll take other director comments, because we're asking a lot.
Okay. I will try. So our in-district program has not gone away, and we have seen a slight reduction, or at least not increase, in our therapeutic day treatment contracted costs. We are actually expanding the program this year. It's going to be housed at the current Rox Hill location. And we are, we have moved in budget money from contracts to the staffing that's being allocated to the program. There is still some contracted costs associated with it, because we don't fully have it staffed with district staff. So it's kind of a chicken and the egg thing. Eventually, we will get there and see the cost savings, but one of our goals is also not just the cost savings, but to be able to serve the students ourselves, and better able to transition them back to their neighborhood school. So I'm not sure if I completely answered your question on that one. And for the sign language interpreters, we actually are not able to find enough district staff as interpreters, and part of the reason is that we are not competitive enough in the amount that we pay the interpreters.
And then I believe we have questions, comments, concerns from Director Pinkham, and then from Director Burke?
Just kind of hope, I don't know if you have a response, I got a couple of questions. First one being, for the privately placed private school students, how do they do if they get sent to Reither, where that's a residency school, being, hey, I'm just a student coming here for this school time? Are they able to really engage in that school okay, or is it meeting the students' needs?
Yeah, that actually, so we contract with them for a very, it's a very specialized part of Reither. It's not the Reither that you're thinking of, Reither. It's services for students who need some social skills instruction, and they go there specifically for that social skills instruction in order to get that specially designed instruction that's on their IEPs when they're not in their private school.
So it'd be more like one-on-one, they're not interacting with the other Reither school students?
Yeah, it's a group of private school students receiving social skills instruction.
Okay. And then on number 10, with the sign language interpreter vendors, you're saying it's based upon the 2017-18 sign language interpreter contract totals, and maybe getting along kind of what Director Geary was saying. Do we know what the requests are? Is the total that we spend different, does that match the requests that we get, or is that, hey, boy, we got $50,000 worth of money we spent on interpreters, but we had $75,000 worth of requests, kind of a thing?
Can you repeat the question?
Are there unmet requests that would have added to the 2017-18 sign language contracts that we aren't including in our budgeted amount?
Joel Lindberg, Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance. Maybe, but we have to give an estimate. This is our best estimate, based on what we have to go on. So that's the cost that...
Based upon the actual costs or the requests?
Based on actual costs that we incurred in 17-18. We don't see a pattern where, at this point, we don't feel like that's going to be different in 18-19. Or we would have brought a different number forward.
Director Burke? Did I cut you off? Go ahead, please.
I was, I was just going to say, if it turns out that we don't need to spend the amount of money of the contract, we would modify the contract down to free up that budget amount.
Or if we need more, we'll be back.
Yeah, that was more that if we possibly needed more, not necessarily less, yeah.
Director Burke?
Every year when these come forward, I struggle a little bit with the, you know, what is the dollar amount, and the service, and, you know, trying to get my head around what each one is. There's a, there's a good summary, like, under the specially designed instruction, item six, for, you know, each provider and number of hours. Do we have an estimate of how many students would be, you know, recognizing this is a contract that's more open-ended, that gives us the flexibility? But it would be helpful for me to say, provider, dollar amount, hours, estimated number of students, to kind of help put them in context.
We have all of the information by students. We were kind of hoping to try and not call out particular students.
Absolutely, yeah. That's kind of where I'm going, is to try, to try to understand, is it one, is it 10, is it 100? At some point, it's at a level where we don't, you know, we can get into person identifiable information, and...
But we can say less than 10. We can say less than 15, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Maybe, not for this round, but maybe that's something we could think about in summarizing this for future, just a single data table. Provider, dollar amount, hours, number of students.
Other questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Well, I have some. I would like it for this round, for these. I'd like it to say less than 10, et cetera. My question here is regarding 11, the EEU, as well as technical support for four schools for inclusion practices for students with special needs during the 2018-19 school year. Which four schools would that be, please?
It's listed in the bar.
Okay, I can find it myself, then.
Okay.
Next question. Do we have a sense of whether or not we are assisting the Seattle Preschool Program Plus, which is going to go to 11 inclusion programs next year? Are we working with the EEU on that as well?
Yes.
And the city is paying those funds, is that correct?
Partially.
Partially or all?
Well, this is for the developmental preschool.
I appreciate that. I'm asking a question in addition to that.
So if we, if we have students with IEPs ages three through 21, we have to serve them. It's not a question of what the city does or doesn't do for preschool. They come in as our special ed student, and we're serving them. That's what this is for. The SPP costs are not specially designed instruction that fall under an IEP. Those are other services, and they're paying for those other services, whatever they might be for their program.
That's not my understanding, but let's follow up with that later.
Okay.
Is there a way to determine between action, excuse me, intro items number six and 11? How much of these numbers are unfunded mandates from the state and federal government? And can we put that in big, bold letters, please, in the action items when they come before us on July 12? I want to start calling out...
Well, I mean, it's part, it's part of the overall special ed deficit.
Okay. So we know what the numbers are, and we can say in bold parentheticals, X number funded by state and federal. SPS funds the difference.
The state funds a per pupil amount. The state doesn't fund certain services. So I don't know that we have a definitive line about what ends and what's in the state bucket of allocation versus what's over. We haven't defined costs in that way. We can tell you what is over the state allocation in total, but identifying specific line items or services or staff or whatever, we haven't, we haven't done that. We haven't gone, gone in that direction. We may get there to some degree when we implement the new sub-fund for levy and that work, so we could try to do, do some digging in that area. But there's not a way to delineate, oh, this cost is funded and this cost isn't. It's more like, the first $10,000 of a kid is funded, and after that, it's not.
Okay, thank you. And the A&amp;F Chair, can you tell us why some of these came up for consideration as opposed to approval, sir?
Let's go back here. Item number seven, I have to go back to my notes.
And feel free to jump in. Assistant Superintendent Bergy, if you know offhand.
I think number seven, there was some, is item number seven for consideration, or?
I think part of it, too, I think might have dealt with what Director Geary brought up with Northwest Soil, just to make sure we're discussing that. I have a notes about clarification on the background for some information there.
And then item number 11, we had confusion in our original bar about numbers, and so it went for consideration while we were clearing up those numbers between how many kids were being served at EEU.
And Director Mack, you can help, please?
Yeah, well, if I remember correctly, I think part of the reason why we made it for consideration, because of the historical issues around this program, that we expected there to be some questions and, and conversation around this bar.
And Director Geary?
To Director Harris's point, I distinctly recall, especially around the Northwest Soil, those contracts, that we did actually have the number of students being served. We, the former bar had more attachments to it, and it did tell us the number of students that were being served specifically, not, we don't, certainly don't want the students identified, but we did have an idea of how many contracts we had with Northwest Soil, how many students we were sending there.
That was my recollection as well, very strongly.
So, because we actually, we saw the agreement documents as part of the bar. So it can be done.
And did you have anything else to add, Mr. A&amp;F Chair? Okay. Other questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? For items number six through 11? And we can expect to see the add-ons for action, to the extent that it's possible.
So the add-on that I have is that you'd like the number of students that were being served for each, each of the bars. Is that it?
And to the extent that we have the numbers for state and federal reimbursement, we call it out.
Yep. That I'm not sure that we're going to have, but yes, I will try.
Okay. Moving on. Number 12, recommendation to award fluid milk products, miscellaneous dairy products, and juice products bid, B02845, came before Ops, June 7th, for? Approval?
Approval.
Okay. Okay, we'll do 12 and 13 together. I'll keep reading. Approval of this item would approve a $969,922 contract to provide dairy and juice products for the district's breakfast, lunch, and after-school snack programs for 2018-19, providing access to nutritious meals to all students in the district. Number 13, recommendation to award fresh produce bid, B02844, came before Ops, June 7th, for?
Approval.
Approval of this item would approve a contract for up to $750,000 to provide fresh fruit and vegetable products for the district's breakfast, lunch, and after-school snack programs for 2018-19, providing access to nutritious meals to all students in the district. Assistant Superintendent McAvoy, take it away.
Thank you very much. So these are our products that we use in our student meals, and we went out this spring for bids. We advertised widely on both of them. We only received one bid for produce and one bid for our dairy products. And in fact, it turned out to be the people who we've been using for the last 10 years. So just to let you know that we have been very pleased with the service that we have been getting from them. The cost of those contracts are, for the milk, essentially the same as we have been having for the last few years, not much of an increase there. So we're staying below $1 million, which has been our standard. The duck delivery bid for our produce, I want to call attention to the fact that the bid was actually $423,064.10. However, we are asking the board to approve a contract for $750,000. There's two reasons for that. The bids that we get on produce in the spring are always, we know the produce is much cheaper in the spring, and it goes up in the winter and fall time, and these bids are only good for 90 days, and then there's market adjustments as we go on. The second reason is that we have applied for a very large fresh produce grant. We anticipate getting it, and so we're looking forward to being able to provide a whole lot more fresh fruits and vegetables for our students.
Questions, comments, concerns? Director Mack, and then Director DeWolff.
I just wanted to mention that our milk comes out of Olympia, which is local, and thank you for sharing that information in committee.
Director DeWolff, please.
Thank you. That actually was part of my question, but I guess, to add on to that, what alternatives do they provide for students outside of cow milk? Is that the right word? Cow milk? Is there any almond, like, soy, or do they provide any of that for students that can't have dairy, or?
I will have to go check, and I do believe that they do. I don't know which of the alternatives that they have, but I can bring that for you.
Thanks, just curious.
Other comments, questions, concerns? Do you have any sense of why we're not getting other bidders?
Yes. We are the largest producer of meals in the state, and it really takes a huge conglomerate almost to be able to provide this. We have looked in the past to try and split it up into smaller groups so that we could have more bidders, but it is so much more effective for us to have one RFP out there and one large bid.
Thank you very much. Number 14, approval of contract with QBSI Xerox for publishing services operations at the John Stanford Center for Educational Excellence, JSCEE, and multifunctional device MFD copier fleet for the district. This came before Ops, June 7th, for?
Consideration.
Approval of this item would approve a contract with QBSI Xerox for publishing services operations at the JSCEE and MFD copier fleet for the district for a period of five years in an estimated amount of $1,371,365 annually. Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Director DeWolff?
Just curious around consideration as verse approval.
My understanding, and I'm looking forward to a brief presentation from staff on this, was that because it was TBD, we didn't have...
TBD, meaning?
To be determined.
Thank you.
So it wasn't actually determined who the bidder was at that point. So there had been 12 submittals, and so, can you speak a little bit about where we're at in the process and the, et cetera?
Sure. Kathy Katterhagen, Director of Logistics. We did have 12 submittals from eight, eight bidders. There were some alternate bids in there. And very competitive process. The lowest bid and the recommended award is to our incumbent provider, QBSI Xerox. They, they provide us with excellent service. We're expecting them to continue to provide that excellent service. And as I said before, it was a very competitive process. They met a lot of requirements that we asked.
Director Mack?
Yeah, so just to clarify, this is being awarded to the incumbent, who is also the lowest bidder?
Yes.
That's, I like that.
Other questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Seeing none, we move on. Number 15, approval of agreement, and let me state, if directors need a person... Seeing none, we move on. Number 15, approval of agreement, and let me state, if directors need a personal break, feel free to take rolling breaks as long as we maintain a quorum here. 15, approval of agreement with King County to purchase Orca Business Passport Products, Metro Transportation, came before OPS June 7 for?
Consideration.
Approval of this item would authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with King County for student Orca cards in the amount of $2,332,889.04. In the form of the agreement attached, and presented to the school board with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent, and to take any necessary actions to implement the contract. A short explanation, please.
Yes. Kathy Katterhagen, again, we have supplemented yellow bus service with Orca cards for the last 20 or so years. And the contract before you is to cover the 8,500 eligible students that we have under our transportation service standards. The cost this year, or next year for Orca cards has decreased by about $128,000 because of the reduction in the use of Orca cards this past year. And the student cost per card will now be $274.45 for the school year, which is a little less than last year also.
And how does this jibe with the recent Seattle City Council passage of the Orca cards for high school students year-round?
This is a separate program from the opportunity program that the city has. However, we will be managing that for them. And the only change to our program, the district's program next year, will be that the high school students will have used throughout the summer months using our district Orca cards, because that will be paid for directly to King County for them to use those cards.
But wouldn't the number go down from here since that happened this last week? I'm confused, obviously.
Director Harris, we had a conversation during the superintendent's comments about this. So, we have two separate programs. The Orca Card Program that the city just passed was for students who are outside of our transportation service standards. So, our high school students who don't qualify for our Orca cards are now going to be eligible, and the city will pay for those.
So, that's supplemental to this?
That is absolutely correct. Two separate programs.
Free, free. Director Mack, please.
One of the things that we've talked about in committee on this was around the protection of taxpayer dollars, both cities and ours, around ensuring that, you know, each student gets one, it's not, there's, so that you have a process in place for the distribution, appropriate distribution of these.
Right.
And to ensure that all students have the access. So, can you explain what that process is a little bit?
Well, I'm not going to take a whole lot of time. I did provide that information to you yesterday and provide in an email so that you had that ahead of time. So, you have a whole written document that you can read about what our internal controls are, because we definitely want to manage the cards and make sure that there's accountability for both our students and our staff.
And for transparency's sake, can you put that in the Friday memo as well, please?
I certainly can.
Super.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments, concerns, seeing none. 16, athletic trainer support services contract came before OPS June 7 for?
Consideration.
Approval of this item would authorize the superintendent to execute a personal service contract with Seattle Children's Hospital in the amount of $346,000 for the first one-year term. The contract may be extended on an annual basis up to two additional one-year terms, to include 11 high schools in the amount of $380,600,000. Either party may terminate this agreement at any time upon 30 days' written notice, total expenditure not to exceed $1,107,200. Please introduce yourself and give us a short explanation.
Yes, hi, my name is Tara Davis. I'm the Assistant Director of Athletics. And a short description, we've contracted with Seattle Children's for some time now, and our district has actually contracted athletic trainer services since 2000. We've, we've been very satisfied with the services that we've received with Seattle Children's athletic trainers. They're stationed in each of our 10 high schools, and if this contract should go through when we bring Lincoln on, then we'll also have a trainer stationed there and at Lincoln as well.
Questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Director Pinkham?
I just want to note, thank you for having this and provide this for safety for our students, because now we're seeing, fortunately, more of our football players, the CTEs, and their injuries committing leading to suicide for our students as their reasoning gets impacted. So, just want to say thank you for providing the services for our students.
Thank you.
I have a question, and it's, it's a familiar one to Associate Superintendent Hernan, and that's about expanding our reach to club sports. Ultimate Frisbee and Lacrosse, those are big, hard sticks, and can cause traumatic brain injury and other injuries. And I'm wondering what we're doing for the future to include those. I might add as well, Ultimate Frisbee might be a more participatory sport and/or may meet some of our Title IX guidelines for making sports activities available to female students.
So, I can speak a little bit to club sports, and I, and I've spoken with risk management about that, because club sport is not centralized. It's each individual school that actually develops their club sports, and risk management has been in touch with that building leadership, and they're developing plans there. I do know our athletic trainers do provide training and first aid CPR for all coaches, and one of the things that we've implemented is for our athletic trainers is each season, they provide training for those who want the first aid CPR, head injuries, concussion, and sudden cardiac arrest.
And I would respond by saying, this is one of those places where building-based management and administrative oversight have an extraordinary tension, and I have to tell you, I will absolutely not feel comfortable telling a parent that their student or child who has been injured, that training is if they want it. I'm very concerned about this issue. I hope that we look into it about how we can both provide and make good quality training available and mandatory to protect our students. Soapbox done. Other comments, questions, concerns on this issue? And it's my understanding you'll be, you'll be participating with Special Olympics in about a week?
I will be. I'll be coaching the team in Special Olympics.
Outstanding. I hope you wear your Seattle Public Schools gear when you do that.
I'm not allowed to, but I'mma, I'mma sneak something in. We'll see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, number 17, BEX4 Award Architectural and Engineering Contract P-1574 to DLR Group for the Broadview Thompson K8 School Seismic Improvements Project. This came before OPS June 7 for consideration. Thank you. Approval of this item would provide authorization for the superintendent to enter into an architectural and engineering A/E contract in the amount of $617,438 for the Broadview Thompson K8 School Seismic Improvements Project. Mr. Bass, take it away.
Yes, it came for OPS through, for consideration, because we were in the process of still negotiating the fee with DLR Group. We have finalized the fee. I will note in Schedule A, the scope of the work is identified, and I'm going to read that. It is for seismic improvements that are expected to include providing precast concrete diaphragm upgrade connections, additional concrete masonry unit, and concrete shear walls, anchoring concrete walls to the foundation, then adding backing to the existing unreinforced masonry in that building, and then verifying the condition of the existing masonry veneer ties. I will note that this work is scheduled to be completed over two summers. We'll begin in the summer of 2019, and then have the contractor finish the work in the summer of 2020. So, open it up to questions.
Questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Director Pinkham?
I thought I was on the meeting, considerations, there's, asking about history, and is that what you added under research?
No, the, the history is at the bottom of, of the background information, the very last paragraph. I saw that, and it's not in the manner in which I would like it to be presented. We will update that paragraph. The next bar before you concerning the John Muir Elementary School has that history in the manner in which I want it presented to the board. So, we will update that information.
And will that be updated before action, then?
It will.
And that's our new standard?
Yes.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, number 18, BTA3 Approval of Budget Increase in Award Contract K-1308 to DOWA IBI Group Architects for the John Muir Elementary School Green Energy Geothermal Wells Project. This came before OPS June 7 for?
Consideration.
Approval of this item would approve a one-time fund transfer in the amount of $1,650,000 from the BTA3 program contingency and authorize A/E Contract K-1308 in the amount of $267,995.00 for the John Muir Elementary School Green Energy Geothermal Wells Project.
So, again, it came for consideration because we had not finalized the negotiations with DOWA. I will also note that we did identify the projects that had been previously completed at John Muir Elementary School. It's the last paragraph in the background section, and that would be the standard that I would propose that we utilize. We're asking for a construction contract, or for a project increase in this budget amount, for this project, so that we can implement the geothermal wells. That was a promise. We have done five of the six schools that we've committed to. This is one of two remaining projects for BTA3. The final project for BTA3 is the implementation of a fire suppression system at Adams Elementary School in the Ballard neighborhood, so.
Well, you anticipated my next question. Director Mack?
So, I got to witness the geothermal wells at low oil heights, right? That's what?
Correct.
And it's an amazing, amazing system. The other thing that I heard that I think is good to celebrate is that the maintenance cost and the cost for managing the system is far, far lower than other systems. So, for an ongoing environmental perspective, it's great, as well as an ongoing cost, so.
You are using the earth's heat to both heat and cool the building. It is substantially cheaper from an operational perspective. It avoids having to have a boiler, a maintenance technician on site when the boilers kick on. And it is, it has some greater first costs, and we are doing some analysis to better understand that payback period. We believe it's below 20 years, but what has not been taken into that analysis is our maintenance cost for sending a boiler technician out when the boilers kick on. And so, that's, we're currently still evaluating that.
And I'd be interested in seeing that for all six schools. You know, when the solar people try and sell you the panels? They tell you how long it will take you to pay back?
Right.
And what that investment is, and the amortization, and when you hit that bonus sweet spot, in addition to the environmental issues that are part of our green policy. Is that a project that y'all are contemplating? Because I'd like to celebrate that in BEX5. You're using your money responsibly.
Yeah, this project in combination with the solar project is a perfect green project. The solar project with the hydronic loop would have the ability to warm the green field in which we're drawing the heat from in the wintertime, and so it actually coils, cools the soil down by heating and the hydronic loop in the summertime, and putting it back into the geothermal well system. It warms that soil back up for a lot, us to allow us to draw that heat back out in the wintertime.
I'd very much like those tools, sooner rather than later, simple pictographs to celebrate some of the great work we're doing, and to assure people that when they give us their hard-earned tax dollars, we're going to use them well. Other questions, comments, concerns, seeing none? Number 19, BTA3 Final Acceptance of Contract K-5068 with MJ Takasaki, Inc. for the Laurelhurst Elementary School Upgrades Project. This came before OPS June 7 for?
Approval?
Approval of this item would accept the work performed under Contract K-5068 with MJ Takasaki, Inc. for the Laurelhurst Elementary School Upgrades Project as final.
So, this project was completed in the summer of 2016. We've now got all closeout documents and are recommending your approval of this so we can notify the three state firms that we need to. I'd note, change orders on this project were at 10.6%.
Director Mack?
I think I am going to start bringing the confetti celebration for these kind of projects, because this is final acceptance. We finished it out. Amazing work.
And is 10% change orders, where does that follow along the continuum?
That would actually be good. This is a historic building, so it's a, I know Director Geary's very, very familiar with Laurelhurst, but it's an old historic building, does not have a lot of documents, and this firm does very good work for us, the architect and the contractor as well.
Thank you. Number 20, BEX4 Final Acceptance of Contract P-5072 with Mike Worlock Construction, Inc. for the Jane Addams Middle School Voluntary Seismic Improvements and Minor Alterations Phase 3 Project. OPS June 7 for?
Approval.
Approval of this item would accept the work performed under Contract P-5072 with Mike Worlock Construction, Inc. for the Jane Addams Middle School Voluntary Seismic Improvements and Minor Alterations Phase 3 as final.
So, this work was also performed in the summer of 2016. We have all of the closeout documents for this project. Change orders were at 9.7% of the contract amount.
Questions, comments, concerns, seeing none. 21, BEX4 Final Acceptance of Contract P-5089 with Western Ventures Construction, Inc. for the Jane Addams Middle School Voluntary Seismic Improvements and Minor Alterations Project Phase 4, as distinguished by the earlier Phase 3. Came for OPS June 7 for?
Approval.
Approval of this item would accept the work performed under Contract P-5089 with Western Ventures Construction, Inc. for the Jane Addams Middle School Voluntary Seismic Improvements and Minor Alterations Project Phase 4 as complete and final.
So, this work was performed in the summer of 2017. We've got all the closeout documents for this project as well. The change order percentage as a, of the contract amount is 5.2% or so.
Questions, comments, concerns, seeing none. Number 22, and last, excuse me, and second to last, we are going back to item number two. I'm told that the technical aspects have been addressed. Number 22, approve purchase of technology to support the Career and Technical Education CTE Program. CTE Program. Approval, this came to the bar, to the dais under intro on the agreement of the Board President, myself, and Deputy Superintendent Nielsen standing in for Superintendent Nyland, which requires agreement between the Board President and the Superintendent to put something on the agenda that hadn't gone through committee. The session, approval of this item would allow the purchase of new computers and carts for a not-to-exceed amount of $800,000. Mr. Perkins, take it away.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. Caleb Perkins, Director of College and Career Readiness. In brief, as the bar states, this is, we received additional funding from the state this year to support our career and technical education programs. And with that additional funding, we, through a collaborative process with teachers, administrators, our CTE team and the DOTS team, decided to focus this additional funding on replacing outdated computers and other technology, given its connection to the board-approved CTE plan and particularly related to investing in STEM outlined in Strategy 1 of that plan and as well as enhancing the rigor of our programs in Strategy 2. This resulted in a detailed classroom-by-classroom, course-by-course, teach-by-teacher-by-teacher analysis of what technology was outdated and what would be most useful to bring it up to standard. And as a result, the list that is attached to this board action report is from that. Clearly, this process took longer and was larger than expected. That is why it's being brought to you directly to the full board. Again, grateful for the opportunity to have it be introduced, and I appreciate any and all questions, and I know the teachers that are looking forward to getting this technology and appreciate your consideration.
Questions, comments, concerns? Director Mack.
At our last Ops meeting, we got a presentation from John Crowell and as well as Jolene Bergy's staff on the capital budget, kind of a more detail, and technology falls in there. So, I'm wondering, does this expenditure, was this budgeted?
This is related...
Because I wasn't involved in last year's budgeting process, so we are in the, we are in the process of approving the capital budget for next year as well, and that went through Ops. So, I'm curious to know about the specific expenditure. It's come up really quickly. It didn't come through Ops, and I'm wondering where it fit in the budget.
Please.
Assistant Superintendent for Finance. This is the general fund expenditure. It's not a capital fund expenditure.
Closer to the mic, please. Thank you.
So, these dollars are not capital-related. They're actually increased CTE dollars that we received in 1718.
And that we will lose if we do not spend by a date certain. Is that correct?
Correct. They rolled out and pushed out a bunch more funding at the end of the year. Kao's been working diligently to try to get that spend plan in place, but when you get more dollars or less dollars, it takes a little bit of time to get all that rolling. So, this is...
And we don't want to give money back to the state that gives us more unfunded mandates. Director Burke?
Building on that, want to spend it, want to spend it...
Wisely.
Wisely in the time that we have, and I appreciate the level of detail that, you know, we're trying to go into the programs and find out what is it that they need. I have, I have definitely struggled with our, you know, sort of biting my lip and swallowing, approving large sums of money for technology that didn't have a clear theory of action. And so, this feels like it's getting us a little bit closer there. But especially around CTE, which is such a, a place that's near and dear to my heart, and talking to some of these educators and the problems they have, like, oh, yeah, I can't buy plastic for my 3D printers, and here we are looking at, you know, multiple digits to, to, to freshen up some, some hardware. It makes me feel like we're leading with the question of, would you like a desktop or laptop, Mac or PC? As compared to, tell me about your program technology needs.
And let's prioritize them.
And let's prioritize them because that's not the entry point to say, do you want a desktop or a laptop? Do you want Mac or PC? I just went through the list here, and, you know, photography, camera, cameras and image editing software, are we supporting that? Yearbook and journalism, are we supporting special publishing software? Biotech, some of the instrumentation that we could be funding that could really be engaging for the kids would be amazing. Culinary programs, like ruggedized tablets for, you know, being able to like splash stuff on it or be able to do like restaurant menuing. Project Lead the Way, engineering workstations, nice, you know, kind of like SolidWorks licenses, all of these things, that's where my, my head goes. 3D printers, medical instrumentation for health, Auto Shop could use like code readers, all the sensors that are used for vehicles. That's my rant. Help me out.
I appreciate the rant. I appreciate the critique. Some of it is apt, but I just want to clarify a couple of things. One is, this is part of a larger CTE budget. This is being brought before the board because of the $250,000 threshold, but there are many other purchases, including the software that you're alluding to. And there was incredible diligence, which is part of what the length that it took of going classroom by classroom. For example, our yearbook classes, making sure we worked with DOTS staff, particularly to find out what's the right computer if you're going to use this particular kind of Adobe software to do this kind of yearbook and graphic design. In the media arts class, if you're going to have photo editing software, which we're accompanying with the Macs, how do we make sure we have the right Macs? And so, could we have done more? Could we have done better? Absolutely, and I'm absolutely looking forward to doing this better next year and going forward. But I do want to be clear, this is part of a larger effort, and it was not, and it was started with many, many meetings with CTE teachers, asking what are your needs? Over the course of the year, this is something that we do each year, but we had an enhanced amount to do it with. But it was not starting with, let's do, let's buy computers, which ones do you want? It was what are your needs? And through multiple conversations, that doesn't mean we're not addressing every single need, and we, you know, things like the Roosevelt piece that I know you're involved with and doing some other, those are also part of the larger CTE budget that I could add in before the final vote, if that would be helpful.
Thanks. Actually, that, I really appreciate that level of clarity. I hadn't captured that in our earlier conversation, that this purchase represents the amounts that exceed 250K for this supplier, but it, if you were looking at other components, supplementary things, whether it's software or whether it's consumables, those are done through basic budget, baseline budget through engaging with these programs as well.
And those things should be shared more fully with the board, so just want to...
Director Mack.
Thank you.
I think to that point, yes, because, you know, we don't have the full picture. And clearly, when it's a board action, it needs to be clear what we're taking action on, and we don't take action on things under 250. But having a link or a reference to whatever budget or report is clarifying the context in which this lives, I think is really important to include in the bar somehow.
Thank you very much. We're going back to number two, Resolution 2017-18-18, Fixing and Adopting the 2018-19 Budget. A&amp;F, June 11 for...
Catching me off guard here. Right to number, consideration.
Approval of this item would adopt Resolution 2017-18-18 to fix and adopt the 2018-19 budget, the four-year budget plan summary and the four-year enrollment projections. Take it away, Assistant Superintendent Bergy.
All right. Next slide, please, Stephanie. Don't let the agenda scare you. We're going to go over lots of things that we've covered in those budget work sessions, and we're going to go quickly unless you have comments or questions, and then we will stop and respond to those. Next slide, please. So, this slide outlines the total dollar amount that you, we would be asking you to approve for the budget, and that is, remember, the board is approving the expenditure piece of the budget. That's what's required by law. So, we're looking at a $955.4 million budget approval for the general fund with capital fund coming in at about $303 million. So, we are well over a billion-dollar business that will be operating in 1819. Next slide, please. This slide just tells a little bit of the story of our October headcount and that we're trending slightly up, so not as steep of growth as maybe we've seen in prior years. Next slide, please.
Director Mack, did you have a question?
No, I just want to make the comment again because it was brought up in public testimony as well as it is terribly confusing. That $53,000 number represents the actual number of students' headcounts, the projection, not the number on which we're funded. We are funded on AAFT, which is the average annual, which is a number that comes out less than the actual number of students that we have. And I just, I just want to say that publicly again.
Which is on the next slide. Next slide, please. Next slide is the AAFTE number, so you'll be able to compare the two charts and see the differential. So, on here, what we've been doing is charting our variance between the planned students and the actual students based on AAFTE, which is the revenue that we were funded by the state on. So, you can see that in 1718, we had planned to have built the budget off of $53,226. We actually ended up with $52,530. And then in 1819, we're sitting about 300 students above that. So, the budget to actual, we have been a little bit higher. What did I say? Oh, 1718 year-to-date snapshot from page 82 of your budget book. October 2017 headcount, $53,386. October 2017 FTE, $52,790. And the estimated AAFTE for the entire year, $52,495. So, October is high, and we go down from there. That is a normal enrollment pattern. General fund resources, this outlines where we get our dollars from. This slide in particular, you can see the differential in that McCleary-Levy swap where the state resources are coming up. This is a partial year decline. We'll see the full year decline in the 1920 school year. Expenditures by state program, you can see that we've had some large increase in regular instruction, that is, the general ed classroom. The biggest majority of that is related to K-3 class size. That's probably over, let's see here, between the K-3 teachers, which was about $12,000, $12,500, $500,000, sorry, getting tired, and the principals that drove, that went with that, and the LAP and Title I Assistant Principals that were approved as WSS changes, we're probably looking at close to $15,000, $16,000,000. Then there's $9,024 credits. That number should be familiar to you as well. There's $7 million for instructional program adoption materials sitting in that number. So, that's where the majority, those are the big numbers included in that increase that looks extraordinarily large. And remember, some of this is a slight uptick in enrollment as well. So, when enrollment grows, our revenues grow, our expenditures grow. This is the chart that shows the same thing, only it breaks it down into a picture, but it shows the same thing. Regular instruction is the basic ed piece of our work. Then you can see followed by special education at 16.5%, followed by ELL is another 3.3%. But this is a chart that explains our programs. Next chart, please. Expenditures by state activity, remember, this is one of the three ways we have to track expenditures for the state. We have to track by program. We have to track by what activity we're doing in the classroom. And third, we have to track by object, which is salaries, travel, contracts, that sort of thing. So, this chart shows that between teaching and teaching support, these are all defined on the next page. We'll go to that next chart. This is the picture, picture of that. So, 62% plus the teaching support, plus the principal's office, we're sitting right at 80%, 82% or so going directly into the classroom.
Can you go back one slide? There you go. Okay, central administration has gone up from $51.2 million to $57.3 million.
Mm-hmm.
And that comprises what? Because we here, as I'm sure you do as well every day, that we are top-heavy at the John
So, we have been at 6% for the last few years. That's what we've been budgeting at. Central administration includes, so we'll go to slide 11, where we outline what is included in central administration on slide 11. So, central administration is the Board of Directors, Superintendent's Office. It'll include the goal work that you approved, human resources, finance, education. So, some of those things are what is encompassed.
And it will, it will also include a, a cost of running the elections, which we have not had in prior years because that's not a yearly...
Substantial.
Correct.
It's about a million dollars, little under a million dollars to run the elections.
And Director Mack?
If you can go back one slide again to those numbers, not the donut, but the, so teaching, as Ms. Bergy pointed out, when enrollment grows, then both expenditures and revenue grows. So, it, in the budget book, does this provide, do you have a per pupil number for each of those years? Because that would give us a more accurate, that would give us another metric at which to look at the growth over time. So, in 2016, how many students was that dollar amount representing?
We have not displayed it in the budget book in that way, but we will take a note for the, for future budget books. Those are numbers, though, that we can provide.
I, I'd be interested in having that information.
And at what point do you want that information? Do you want that for July 12? Or you want it included in the budget book next year as a standard?
I think including it in the next, next year as a metric that's informative to the public and to us is helpful, but I would like to actually know what the numbers are for the current year, and I don't know that that needs to be provided before...
Before voting on the budget.
Before voting on it. It's just an additional bit of information, but...
Okay.
It could be Friday memo, whatever's comfortable to you.
Would September be okay when we start our work sessions? Well, we kind of...
When we get a new notebook.
Yes, we get a new notebook, we'll roll that up into a slide, and we can do it a trend over a few years. That will give us some time to scour through that.
Yes, thank you. That's fine. Appreciate it.
You bet.
I know I've made it to at least slide 11. Okay, so slide 11 kind of talks about what's, what's included in each of those state activity groups, just as a reference for definition, because it's hard to know when it's such a broad title. So, moving on to slide 12. This is by object. It's that third slice of expenditures that we have to report. I'm going to go to the next slide. The next slide is a little bit more informative. What we have here is if you look at certificated salaries, classified salaries and benefits, we're sitting at about 85% of our total expenditures are tied up into salaries and benefits. That is a very normal amount for a school district to run with.
For our most important resources.
Absolutely. We're all about teachers, so our biggest commodity, the money that we spend the most money on, absolutely makes sense because that is our staff in our schools. Next slide, please. This talks about what direct services are, so it's another way to look at those dollars flowing out to our schools in direct service and support services. This number has stayed steady, might have upticked slightly. This is maintenance supplies, so MSOC and operating costs that we have. So, the state funding versus our expenditures, you're going to see that we're spending more dollars, and that will come from levy. So, how many dollars the state's allocating versus how many dollars that we're planning on spending?
Quick question. Is this where the request for more than every third day janitorial in our schools would show up as far as a projection?
No. I think what this, what the facility's maintenance line shows up, that our buildings are costing us more to maintain than the state is providing. The staffing would not be in the supplies or the materials component of our funding. They would be in the classified allocation. So, in the classified allocation, if you'll recall, we discussed a couple of work sessions ago, we're projecting still to have about an 80 to 90 million dollar gap between how many classified staff we're carrying now and how many the state is funding us for. About 350 of those are... and how many the state is funding us for. About three hundred and fifty of those are special ed pares, IAs. Next slide, please. This quickly just talks about the associated student body budget. It's holding steady. We see no issues. We've provided some bullets there for you to review. Next slide. Debt service fund, basically, the only thing we have running through the debt service fund at this point is that payment on our bond for the John Stanford Center. Otherwise, we are debt-free, which is a very unique and great position for a district to be in. And the capital fund, we've done some extra work for you here. We've had work sessions that have now expanded how we talk to you about the capital budget. We went to the Operations Committee recently and gave some additional understanding as well. So we have an ending fund balance. That's healthy. We think the capital fund and our projects are in good shape.
Director Mack?
Yeah, I really appreciate that we've been doing that work together. It's part of policy that the capital budget be approved by the, and reviewed by the Operations Committee. I think it's an additional step for the deep dive to happen and to help the planning around what we're spending our capital dollars on. So I appreciate the additional work that we've been putting into that. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa's been doing a great job in capital finance. The budget book that you received this year also has expanded information in it. Next slide, please.
Thank you.
You're welcome. These are our next steps. These are just the next steps that budget has to take. We have to submit to our E S D for approval. We're coming back to the board, hopefully, for budget approval on July eleventh. And then we go through the rest of the process. So that's kind of outlining the summer work for us. There is an appendix. I want to reference two pages in the budget book that's available online, and that you each had a hard copy in the boardroom. So on page two hundred and nineteen, there's a district-wide staff summary, and that is by department. You generally find that interesting because it lists out the central office departments that you often get questions about. And then the link to the school funding allocations, that is available online, as well as in the budget book, starting on page eighty-nine, a by-school budget analysis at that snapshot time. That would conclude my remarks.
Thank you ever so much. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? I triple dogged area. Director Pinkham?
Well, I just want to mention that one of our commenters, he did provide a possible typographical errors. And yes, my, just, my term isn't from two thousand eighteen to twenty twenty-two, so just, hopefully, we're going to check on those, what was suggested. Thank you.
What do you mean, you're not sticking around to twenty twenty-two? Okay. Director Geary, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Please.
So when we have the school-by-school breakdown, this doesn't include what the schools are actually spending, because it doesn't include the donation money. Is that correct?
It does not. It does not include the PTA money. We have provided to audit and finance, and we can provide to the rest of the board. We've provided what we call, are calling the big sheet. It does include the per pupil breakdown that we're allocating in revenue to every school. It has the PTA dollars sitting on there that we know at that point in time. It includes city F E L. So the budget book has the point in time of what we know at that point, which we have to have done in May. And then, as we know more, we, we complete this, what we call the big sheet, and keep track of it throughout the year.
Excuse me. Go ahead, please. And that's because this is what we were projecting, and we can't plan based upon donations. I do think it is confusing, though, for people to have to dig in a variety of different places to get the accurate snapshot for any given school. And so I do wonder if we couldn't somehow figure out a way to put in a historical additional amount somewhere reflected, only because it becomes hard for people to really understand.
Yeah.
And so if you pull this up, it may look like a school is not receiving a lot of money when they're getting an additional half a million dollars from a donation source, and then to expect people to go, oh, well, this says Bailey Gatzard, or this says Laurelhurst, and then to have to continue to dig. I, I'm just trying to think of a way to get to transparency, because this is becoming a bigger and bigger issue in our district, and people are trying to figure out how to address the inequity of it. And it looks like we're somehow complicit in misinforming people, where I know we're not, because I understand what you're saying. But the idea is, how do we become transparent? And do we reference that on this sheet and tell people where they can go to find it? I don't know.
I can post something. So we'll go over something in September's A and F. That is our idea for maybe how we provide more transparency without killing off my staff.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And can I add booster clubs to that list as well, please? Not just P T S A.
That's A S B, and I don't know that we're going to be able to see that as, we'll have to look.
No, booster clubs that are nonprofits, that are supporting athletics and music, et cetera, some of which run into the hundred thousand dollars a year, is an equity issue. And it is troubling. It is a Pandora's box at best. But we, we need to recognize it and embrace it and be very, very clear about it. Director Mack?
I, 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 I agree with the comments that are being brought up, and we've been having these conversations about how do we share this information and capture it, because it is complicated, because it kind of falls through the cracks when it comes in after the budget is done, and, or it goes direct. I mean, I think actually the Orca cards is a, is a good example of a whole bunch of student support dollars that came to the district students, but it's not actually on our budget of the Opportunity Orchid. It doesn't show up because of how it comes through. And two things happen when it doesn't show up in our budget or show up transparently. One is that we may not remember or continue to get the funding for that important thing. And the other thing is the potential inequity. And so I think this is a longer process that we don't, as a board member, I don't want to put extra work on staff that's not meaningful, but there's a, there's a goal of creating transparency around capturing the real expenditures and spending and revenues around the district a little bit more fully. So thank you.
Okay, this portion of the meeting at nine ten is done, but we will be going into both an executive and closed session, which we expect to last fifteen minutes, and we will leave through this auditorium when we adjourn. Thank you so much.